Welcome, everybody. It's almost 6 o'clock, depending on which clock you look at. This is the July 2 meeting of the West Jordan City Planning Commission. All commissioners are present. We will begin with a review and approval of the minutes of the June 18 meeting. Commissioner Allen.
I motion to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Thomas.
I'll second that motion.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Wendy's preliminary site plan and administrative conditional use permit. Public hearing item with final action by the planning commission. We will first hear from a representative of Dominion Engineering, Mr. Farley, Farley Eskelson.
Hello, I'm not actually Farley Eskelson. I'm Andrew Horn, but also with Dominion Engineering. Yeah, excited to be here today to present this to you. I think we have a good, a good site plan that we've developed and looking forward to answering any questions and moving forward with this. I don't know if there, anything else you want me to say?
It appears we don't have any questions now, but we'll call you back up if we have some more questions after we hear from Taylor.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chair and Commission. As mentioned, this is two applications. It's the administrative conditional use permit for a restaurant, fast food general, and a preliminary site plan. The reason the administrative conditional use is coming to you is so we only have to have one meeting, not two for the same item. It's located at 7914 South, 5600 West. Here we can see the site there outlined in yellow. As mentioned during the pre-meeting, it is in that same development as Home Depot. The zoning there is SC2. As you can see, the rest of that commercial development has that same commercial zoning. The future land use designation is neighborhood commercial as well, which means zoning matches the general plan there. So we have reviewed the site plan. We've got the drive-through that goes all the way around it. We've calculated parking and they meet and exceed the minimum parking standards for this site. The applicant has provided elevations for what it will look like. It's four-sided architecture and hides all services and like, whatever those are called. Power and air conditioning are all hidden behind parapets, so this does meet our design standards. Overview of the project, it's 1.11 acres. Next step for this is a staff level approval of the final site plan. We are recommending approval of both applications, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions or comments from the commissioners? Hearing none. We will accept the motion.
It is a public hearing.
Oh, it's speaking. I'm sorry. Yeah. We're now open, open to a public hearing on this item. Anybody in chambers? Anybody on the phone? Anybody on Zoom?
We do have some people logged in on Zoom, so maybe if you could ask them to raise their, there are people logged in on Zoom. If you'd ask them to raise their hand if they want to speak, then we'll.
If you are on Zoom and would like to speak, will you please raise your hand so we can acknowledge you?
No hands.
No hands. Going once, going twice. Gone. So public hearing is now closed. I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Allen.
We're quiet tonight. I think this'd be great. So I move that the planning commission approve a conditional use permit for restaurant, fast food general for Wendy's at Highlands on approximately 1.11 acres at 7914 South, 5600 West, subject to all conditions and requirements of approval.
Commissioner Hatch.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? This is irrelevant to the discussion, but I'm curious to know, can somebody remind us what's going to go on lots, lots 2, 3, lots 2, 3, 4, and 5? Before, hold on to that question for just a minute. There's a second motion which I missed. Commissioner Allen.
I move that the planning commission approve a preliminary site plan for Wendy's at Highlands located at 7914 South, 5600 West, subject to all requirements of approval.
Commissioner Hatch.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? The motions both carry unanimously. Now my question on lots 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Yeah, it's a good question. We've got applications and approvals in for two of those lots. Three and five have been approved for multi-tenant buildings. Some of those tenants that we're looking at are nothing but cakes, Chipotle, Wingstop. I don't remember what the other ones are, but those are the, the big three highlights. So a lot of food type establishments in that area.
Okay, thank you. So it's gonna be a busy corner. Next item is terrain. West Bench Plat 5. We will first hear from Mr. Langston.
These are working. I'm Gary Langston with Third Cadence, representing Wood Ranch Development. Before you tonight, we have terrain plat 5, which is our next plat in our sequence. It's 112 lots. And there's a mix between single-family and townhomes in this subdivision. It's approximately 23 acres and we'll also have, at least with this particular plat, almost four acres of open space. If you recall, within the MDA, there are two different types of open space we can have. One is maintained by the HOA, which we generally refer to as Plots. And then the sexy acronym known as TDOs, that is the, the open space that the city gets to maintain on behalf of the development. In terms of the, the project itself, this is a, an extension of Plats 3 and 4 within terrain. Plat 3 is under construction. Plat 4 was approved several weeks ago. I want to say it was one of the last planning commissions, and we'll start doing masquerading for that particular plat here in the next few weeks. And construction of plat 4, we'll, we'll follow that with plat 5 starting construction early next year. In terms of how it fits into the city's framework, we agree with all the statements that were made in the, in the staff report that it's compliant with city ordinances and requirements. We feel like it's a logical extension of the city's infrastructure and, and meets all the requirements under the MDA and, and within the city's ordinances. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for us at this time.
I have a couple of questions. In the staff reports, page 3, it says there's adequate sanitary sewer capacity for this development, but off-site improvements may be needed. Can somebody elaborate on that a little bit for me?
Sure, I'm happy to do that. So this particular subdivision is actually served by Kern's Improvement District, and there are no constraints on off-site improvements at this point. I think that may be something the city includes as a potential, but as far as we're concerned, as far as kids told us, there are no restrictions on our ability to be served. In fact, their existing infrastructure serves all of the proposed 2,000 units that we would ultimately build within terrain.
Okay. And there's, there's also mention in here, we may have heard this question before, but I've forgotten the answer. If we have Green Court lots, what are those?
So the, the Green Court lot is a definition that's from the PCH zone, and it really just references a lot that fronts onto open space. So if you think of lots within terrain, majority of, well, not the majority, half of them or so front onto a road, the other half front onto an open space. So it's really just a generic definition of a lot that fronts onto open space. It does have some speci- specific requirements within the PCH zone in terms of its width. But interestingly enough, we do have lots that front on open space that are not called a green court as well.
Thank you, I think. Okay, we'll, any more questions for Mr. Langston? Okay, we'll call you back in a minute if we need to. Let's hear now from Mr. McCandless from the city.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. So tonight you're just looking for, for two actions. One will be on the, for approval on the preliminary subdivision plat, and then the second item would be approval of the preliminary sub-area development plan, which was included in your packets. We really don't have anything to add beyond what's already stated. My recommendation is for approval, subject to meeting those conditions of approval that are listed in your staff report. So be happy to answer any questions you have.
Commissioner Allen.
I, regarding the open space that's going to the city, is the city at a point prepared to, we're gonna have to be to, to handle that. But what's going to be requested at the very beginning with that? Do we need to get out and maintain that open space before the homes are actually constructed? What, what goes into the maintenance?
Well, the maintenance would occur after the homes are instructed, are constructed. This, the open space is dedicated as part of each phase. There's a certain amount that's required as part of each phase, but it wouldn't be until the, the subdivision is, is, is developed and then we had retain, at, at some point we'd retain the open space with the recording of the plat. It'd go into the city's hands and, and then we'd be responsible for maintaining that open space.
So the, yeah, Ray's right. The, the takedown will come, as you've seen, in each, each plat, but the maintenance, just for efficiency. For example, well, this is kind of a hard graphic to see, but there are, there's, there's improvements that, that will occur on some of this TDOs. Trails, for example, mountain bike trails, walking trails. We are not, we as the city won't take over maintenance until those, it's actually improved by the developer and, and goes through a little bit of a warranty period, and then we would assume the responsibility for maintenance.
Commissioner Hollingsworth.
So on the, the trail, this whole thing, development, this open space, is there a detailed plan of what is going to be included in that and how it's going to be planted and, and maintained?
Yes, it's, it's highly detailed. We've got the road cross-sections or the trails cross-sections and also the landscaping that's getting done as part of that, if there is any. Most of it will go, most of the trail system will go up through the, the areas where there's the native, it just, there'll be native vegetation, but.
Is there a bond associated with this to ensure that everything is, is built according to the design before we take over?
Under Utah law, we can't bond for landscape improvements any longer, so no, there won't be a bond, but the, the plan was approved as part of the entitlement, so it was approved at the zone change. So the trail plan, as Ray said, all the cross-sections are highly detailed, but they're approved in entitlement, so that's, you know, what you're approving is just the subdivision. So everything you see is just a reflection of what's in the master development agreement, so.
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to avoid a nice work, so.
So some of the newer commissioners, you may not be, be familiar with, with, we'll call it the backstory, all of the, the work that has gone in to this master plan. Is that, maybe I should leave this to the end of the meeting, but is that something that, that the commissioners have access to, or have you seen that? Some of the newer commissioners? I think we can, we, we should provide that as, as context because Mr. Langston's gonna be before this commission many, many times in the future as, as this master plan develops out, but you need to see the overall picture and, and, and so we, we as staff will get that to you.
Any other questions? This item was noticed for public hearing, so public hearing is now open. Is there anybody on the phone or who has joined us by Zoom that would like to comment?
No one has raised their hand yet.
We'll give Zoomers and phone callers another minute to raise their hand, be acknowledged.
There's no one with their hand raised.
Okay. There appears to be nobody wishing to speak, so we will close public hearing. And now go to a further comment or, or a motion. Commissioner Thomas.
If nobody has any questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion. Okay, I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary major subdivision, subdivision plat and preliminary sub-area plan for the terrain plat 5 subdivision, located on approximately 23.382 acres at 7400 South and SR111 with the conditions and requirements of the approval listed in this report.
Commissioner Allen.
I will second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next item is public, is transportation master plan with notice for public hearing with recommendation to the city council for final action. Nate?
As you may recall, several months ago, we, we came to the planning commission and, and gave you just kind of a progress report and let you know that we've commissioned the engineering firm WCG to be our consultant and to, to lead that effort from a technical standpoint. Jeremy Searle was the presenter on that. He's here again today, and we'll turn the time over to him. Basically, he'll be able to report on some of the things that have occurred since that last update, progress report, and what is here in our essentially final version of the plan. And we'd just like to hear any comments you may have or comments from the public.
Hey, thank you, Nate. Again, my name's Jeremy Searle, consultant, project manager with WCG. Happy to be here tonight, so thank you. It was fun to be here a few months ago and, and talk about this. You have a wonderful staff. We've been having a great time working with them to complete this master plan. We've done a lot of public outreach, meeting the stakeholders, neighboring cities, things like that to, to bring this together, and I think it looks really good. I think I may have mentioned this last time, but I, I just want to talk about it again. What you see on the screen here is a story map, a website that has all the information for the transportation master plan. It's much easier to, to get on this and scroll through and find the relevant information you're looking for than having to read a long document. That document is important, and I think you have that in your packet. That has all the details and analysis backing that up, so if you ever need to go to those details, they're there. But for, you know, the public or a developer or staff that's looking for a quick answer of what's in the master plan, it's real easy to come here to the story map and find that. This is hosted on the city servers, so they, so you have control of that and you can update GIS layers and stuff as needed as well in the future, so. I'll just quickly go through this, and then if there's any questions, I'd love to answer those. So here at the beginning, we just kind of introduce the city and the boundaries and the annexation boundary here. There's some information on the public involvement that you can see. There's links there that you can find more information on that. I'm not gonna spend a ton of time here in interest of time. We do have information on safety. You can see the heat map here of, of crashes for 2017 through 2022. That's the last five years of full data that we, that we have. 2023 is still being finalized. You can see, no surprise here, the crashes are centered around the busiest roadways. Many of them are UDOT roadways. We have some additional stats here. These are our fatal and serious crashes. These are the crashes we are most concentrating on avoiding. And you can see there's, there's quite a few throughout the city. In fact, if you look at some of the comparisons here, West Jordan does have a higher crash rate than many of the neighboring cities, and so that's something that we focused on and made recommendations for safety improvements and things like that, and have been coordinating with UDOT on those as well. Okay.
Could I ask a quick question on that?
Yes, please.
As long as we're on the safety side. You did a great presentation on this couple of sessions ago?
Yeah.
And we talked a little bit back and forth on this, but with the, the safety improvements that are being recommended, are those fully mechanical, or do you have any employee-based, like getting more officers out or anything like that?
That's a good question. More enforcement is always a good, a good thing, right? It's also dependent on budgets and, and things like that, right? And so we typically, for master plans, focus more on the infrastructure side. And then I think city staff and others are aware of, of the employee side, so they can make those kind of recommendations for more, at least.
I'm going to interrupt you as well. Back to the safety.
Yeah.
The comparison with the other cities, do they have a similar amount of road miles or roads in the city that, are, are we all about equal or some larger than others?
So these are rates, so it's, it's based on miles traveled, right? So not, not road miles, but
Okay.
but volume on the roadways.
Volume, okay.
And so that way we can compare the two. And so, yeah, West Jordan does have higher rates than those, as well as a higher number of overall crashes as well. You can see those there, so it's, it's both.
Thank you. That's concerning, but thank you.
Is it possible to project a change in the percentage crash rate based on the the plans?
It, it is at a local level, right? So we can take a specific intersection and say, okay, we, we have this specific crash rate at this intersection. We plan to make these changes. We anticipate crashes will go down this much. To project that over an entire city is not really feasible, but at a intersection by intersection location, that can be done. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Let's talk about transit for a second. This first map shows the existing transit in the city, and you can see the, the different lines there. We've got tracks and bus routes through the city. Pretty decent coverage compared to some of the others in the southwest quadrant. You know, if you look at Harriman or Bluffdale Riverton, right? They, they don't have quite as much, so. But transit is a good thing and can always use more. So let's look at what's planned in the future. Here's some links to both UTA and WFRC's long-range plan, and then we have the map here showing their recommended improvements. You can see with this slider bar, I think I'm just far enough away that my mouse isn't very responsive. Sorry, Larry. I feel, yeah. Thank you. Now I can, now I can drive. Okay. So we have this slider bar. If I drag it this way, this shows the WFRC plans. If I slide it back this way, this shows the UTA plans for transit. They don't, they don't quite line up. They're planned by different organizations. But we wanted to show both of those on here. So, so this is what's planned in the future for transit. Any questions that I can answer on that?
This is something we don't have direct influence over. It's more of a if you build it, they might come.
Correct. Yeah. The city doesn't have direct control over this. Obviously, they can make recommendations to these. There's actually a study happening right now called the Fresh Look Transit Study that the city is a participant in, and so they're working with others in the southwest quadrant, like South Jordan and Harriman, that are going through some trans, some transit recommendations. And so those types of studies are your best opportunity to kind of influence what the future transit will look like in this area. So I guess my recommendation would be to participate in those, and if there are specific things you're looking for, to kind of present those ideas at those studies. All right. We also referenced the station area plans. That's a, a big ongoing effort throughout the state. West Jordan is, is on top of that and have had their plans all adopted already, except for 56 West. Thank you, Larry. And that one just went out to, to bid recently, so that will start being, that's being worked on. You're, you're right. Sorry, I'm referencing the South Jordan one. There's a little corner there that is in South Jordan. I, I won't mention that, sorry. The 56 West one's being worked on, so. Yeah. That one's being worked on. Okay. The active transportation plan, this was done previously. Yeah, go ahead, Mayor. Am I in trouble here? I gotta be careful up here. We'll move on. Active transportation. So the active transportation plan was done fairly recently, and so we incorporated those recommendations in here. We didn't redo the ma- that plan that was, like I said, previously done, but we, we added those in here to the, to the master plan to make sure they align. All right, so we're gonna switch gears a little bit here and talk about roadways. When we, we evaluate roadways, we use the travel demand model to look at what's happening out there currently on the roadways and how that's gonna change into the future. So here's a, a map of the existing conditions for West Jordan. Those roadways that you see shown in red or dark red are failing roadways, and you can see, I don't, I don't think these will surprise too many people, but we've got 90th and 70th here. It's producing congestion. So let's look at what this, what happens in the future. 2033. Our 2010 years. Again, we have a slider bar here on the left as if we did nothing or the no build, so no, no new projects. If we slide it to the left here, this shows all the build scenarios. So if we build the projects that are recommended by the master plan, you can see that that improves significantly. So we have a lot of failing intersections and roadways through here. And then as we make these improvements or these projects, the capacity improves and we see a lot better operations through here. Similar analysis for out to 2050. So again, you can see if we did nothing, there's a, there's a lot of red. You'll notice these are particularly concentrated in the east-west direction. That's where West Jordan has its most significant challenges for, for travel. There's a lot of north-south routes, but that east-west is challenging. One project in particular that I'll just note is, is, you know, 90th South. It's being widened, right? Which, you know, that'll help capacity there. But 90th South is the only route that goes from I-15 and will go to SR111, right? That's the only route in the entire city that'll, that'll do that, and that's not in place yet, but is planned as one of the projects to make that connection out to SR111.
When you go through and, and forecast this, and we're talking 50 years, at some point, it's just like we're looking at 2,000 more homes here with the terrain development. There's multiple other developments through there. How did you determine where those folks were going to drive, whether it be north-south on U-111 or east-west?
Yeah, great question. So there's a lot of work that goes into the socioeconomic data, the inputs to the travel demand model. And so that goes to to what you were talking about, the number of homes, the number of jobs, the densities, the roadway network itself, speeds on the roadways, all those types of things. And then this model is actually developed originally by WFRC. And so they do it for the whole Wasatch Front, basically, from Tree, not Tree Mountain. Goes all the way up from Pleasant View down to Santaquin. And covers all that. And so they have all the the destinations, employment centers, airports, hospitals, school, right? They're they're all in there. And so it uses it's programmed to get people there based on routes that they take. It's calibrated to existing conditions. And then how that socioeconomic data changes in the future influences where those routes go. So it's a pretty complex program. There's actually only a handful of people in the state that do travel demand modeling. I'm not one of those that program it. I am one who uses the outputs. But we do have some travel demand modelers that that just program these and that's their that's their thing, right? And so there's probably 12 to 15 people in the whole state that can can do that. So yeah, any other questions on that? Okay. So based on that analysis, and I didn't want to spend too much time on that, but but let's see what comes out of that, right? So this is where we get to kind of the meat of it. This is the projects that are recommended to address the capacity or demand issues that we see there. So what are these projects? On the left, we have a list of projects that you can see, and I know it's I know it's small. But this list on the top, anything in red is phase one. Blue is phase two, and then the purple is phase three. So when I say phase one, two, and three, phase one is the next 10 years. Phase two is the 10 years after that. And then phase three is out to 2050. Okay? So we have these maps. Sorry, moving things around here. And you can zoom in and out and see different projects on here. So for example, we have some widening on Redwood Road. We know it's it's currently being widened, but this is this is also programmed. If I click on that, that'll show. This is planned. This is a WFRC project. It has the estimated cost, has the number of future lanes, so out to seven lanes, three each direction with a center turn lane. It's a widening project, and it's in phase one. Right?
Question.
Yes.
While we're looking at these pages, is a good time for me to ask my question.
Yes.
If we know as I look at these phases, I can see in phase one that that we are trying to, that we've planned to widen 7,000 South, 7,800 South, 9,000 South, widen those to five lanes. And then in phase two, those get widened widened to seven lanes. My question is, if we know now that we want those roads to be seven lanes, why do five now and seven later? Why don't we just do seven now and get the pain over with?
I'm not sure if I totally get your question here, because I don't think that we've done double projects on the same roadway like that. So like 70th, the plan is to go to five lanes, and that's the the ultimate build there. 90th is already five, and it's planned to go to seven. 78th.
So point out right there where it says current lanes and future lanes. I think that's where.
Current is five. The plan is to go to seven.
Well, I'm looking at page 19 of the document.
Just click on that again.
This one here.
Yeah. So if you look on here, you can see current name is five, future name is seven.
Well, right, I understand it's going from five to seven, but I'm saying, why do five now and then come back and widen and do the two more, two more later?
Yeah, it's already five.
Already five?
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay, so so that's your list of of roadway projects. We have two maps for both the roadway and the intersection projects. The first map shows the phasing or the timing of when these improvements would take place. The second map shows the type of project or the scope of the project. So here you can see anything in blue would be widening projects. Anything in purple would be operations. Red are new roadways. And then the orange is potential. That's that's way out there past 2050. That's just this road out here. Okay. So that's the scope. So let's go down to intersection projects. There's quite a few intersection projects. Again, we have the the written list here if you want to look at those specifically. Or we have the map, so you can see where they're located. The first map is again is by phase. So the red is phase one. These are the ones that we anticipate in the next 10 years. These are also the ones that would be eligible for impact fees. So that would be the next step after the transportation master plan is to do to your impact fee analysis. So you can see there's there's quite a few of these out in the western half of the city. We're seeing a lot of growth out there, but there are a few that need some intersection improvements here in in kind of West Jordan proper. And then I'll scroll down to the scope here. So these are the intersection types. Okay, so you see the different colors here represent, you know, whether it's planned to be a signal or a roundabout, or whether it's a rail crossing improvement. Some of them are new interchanges with the Mountain View Corridor project. Things like that. Any any questions on intersection projects? Okay, here's a map of our existing roadway network. This shows the the collectors' arterials and highways through the city, as well as the signals and roundabouts. So that's what's out there now. And then we have our future roadway map. I'll make that a little bigger here. So you can see how that grows, especially out here in the west. We've got a pretty good grid network. A grid network is is key to providing good connectivity, to spreading out traffic loads. If we just build arterials with a whole bunch of cul-de-sacs off of that, that overloads our arterials and and causes problems, right? And so what we want is a good grid connected network. And so that's what we're trying to accomplish here. You can see the intersection types. We've got a number of signals and roundabouts planned. Of course, improvements to to Mountain View becoming a freeway in the future. Any questions here?
Observation, check me on this. Right where it says Cougar Lane at the top, if you follow that down, there's a roundabout between two lights. I don't think that roundabout exists. Maybe it does. It's just further into that. Oh, I see it now. Okay.
Not not on the arch or collector road there. It's in that neighborhood.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Good, good catch. Okay. Here's the roadway cross sections. There's there's a number of them here all the way from really big. So major arterial, this is the seven lanes. We'll notice we have buffered bike lanes on all these, right, Mayor? They're all on there. And all the way down to our our local residential roads here. Okay, any questions on cross sections? Okay, and then the last thing here is is just the map application. This is for anyone to use the public or or city staff or whomever. This just allows the user to go on and turn on and off any layers that they're interested in. Maybe they want to compare the transit routes to the to the functional class map and see if they're on arterials or not. Or you can turn on the crashes and compare it to the transit routes or, you know, whatever it is. You can turn on and off different layers and kind of see how those compare. We have different things in here, like we've identified all the dead ends, right, or intersection control different things. So you can kind of play around with that if you want to look closer at at specific things. And that's that's the end of the story map. So as I mentioned, we we feel really good about the transportation master plan. We have a great draft. It's been reviewed by by city staff and and others. We're we're hoping to, of course, take this to you and then event and then to city council next and get it adopted. So any questions?
In the plan, there's a reference to the something called the airport gap.
Yes.
I know that there was a meeting about, I'm going to say, six months ago, a community public hearing regarding the airport. I'm curious to know what's the what ideas are out there in terms of dealing with that airport gap?
Yeah, 70th South. They were actually doing their their master plan. We met with them and kind of tossed out some ideas of of connecting a roadway through there or under going underground or having their their runways go over the top of the roadway, right? We talked about potentially just transit routes through there or even going around the edge of the airport, different things. They were hesitant to agree to any of those items. They they didn't they didn't want to go that far. However, we do recommend in the transportation master plan that there be a study on 70th South to see if there's any way to make some type of connection there or or identify some type of transit that may get people through there. That's 70th is one of your your really good east-west routes, except for that airport gap, right? That that really makes it a little tough. So we do recommend some a study there to try and identify ways to help fix that. Right now, you know, 64th gets overloaded and then 78th and 70th is the only one that connects well to I-15. So anyway, it's kind of a challenge.
Mr. Hollingsworth?
So, yeah, I'm I'm looking at your your thing here. The corner of 64th West and 78th South is a roundabout. And it that's a a major intersection there. There's a firehouse right on that corner, the northwest corner of that. And yet there's signals on either side of that roundabout. Why a roundabout there?
It's a great question.
Well, he's looking for that. I do know a little bit of history. The the city council passed an ordinance a number of years ago that that basically they had to approve. They had to approve any roundabouts on arterial roads, and that is one of them that they approved years ago.
Okay.
And we already have acquired property, I think, on three or three or four of the the corners there.
Yeah, thank you for sparking my memory on that. So that is the case, and it was in the previous transportation master plan as well. And so we're carrying that forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question just in regards to the expansion of those art major routes, 70th, 90th, 78th. When you acquire land, how, I mean, that's a huge process to take make a five lane into, you know, seven. What's the the length? I mean, what's the process for all of that?
Great question. That it's not an easy process, right? So it goes through several steps. It goes through, first, it's planned in the in the master plan. Then as it gets closer, oftentimes those bigger projects like that will be planned on the which these are on the regional transportation master plan. So that would be WFRC. That's where funding would come from. You typically, they're UDOT roadways, and so UDOT will be involved. The next step would usually typically be a feasibility study, where they would look at that, look at different alternatives, whether the road should be shifted or widened to the north or to the south or or something in between. It would look at what kind of impacts there are, things like that. Then it would go to an environmental study. The environmental study doesn't even deeper dive into those same types of things, looks at any environmental concerns and identifies the preferred alternative. Once that happens, it it can then be eligible for corridor preservation funds. So when, let's say, a home comes up for sale on there that we know that we're we're widening and we've done the environmental, you can use these quarter preservation funds to buy the home, right? And and the city, whomever can hold that until the project's ready, that type of thing, right? And then when the project comes up, at that point, there's a right-of-way acquisition process where any properties that haven't been previously purchased or if new development comes in, they'll usually make them dedicate the the right-of-way needed, right? If there's redevelopment or new development. Any that haven't been taken care of through those processes, there would be a right-of-way acquisition agent that would come and meet with the the home or business owner, explain the project, explain what's happening, let them know kind of what property is needed, and they would go through those negotiations. They have to offer fair market value. And there's a detailed set of rules and stuff to go along with that, right? And then and then the project would be designed and constructed. So.
That's a lot.
It is a lot. It's a it's a multi-multi-year process.
Absolutely. It's, yeah, it's a lot. So for, I I believe they're putting an overpass over on 70th South by Heartland Elementary. Am I correct in that, that there's an overpass going in there?
It's a pedestrian.
It's a pedestrian.
Pedestrian. I'm not, I'm when I meant overpass, I meant pedestrian overpass. So if this if 70th is widened to seven lanes, will that overpass be created to accommodate those seven lanes, or will it be?
We've designed it with a span that'll accommodate the seven lanes.
Oh, wonderful. I like that. Thank you.
Okay, other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Mr. Nelson, do you have anything to add?
No, I I believe Jeremy's covered it very well. I appreciate them and their good work. We feel like they've been been thorough. They've been very open to the suggestions from the city and the public and done their best to address those and and we're happy to to be at this point.
Okay, thank you. This item is noted for public hearing, so public hearing is now open. Is there anybody here or on the phone or by Zoom that wishes to comment?
Okay, it looks like we'll have Matthew Myers.
Matthew Myers. You may now speak. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I apologize. That's the incorrect name on there. My name is Lenise Hendrickson. My husband and I live at 6278 West Copper Dust Lane, and we are specifically concerned about the area around 90th South, New Bingham Highway and 6400 West. When we first purchased our home, the city's master plan for transportation showed that New Bingham would be closed, that 90th South would remain open. And we're disappointed that the current plans indicate both of those roads will remain open. We understand growth is going to happen, but there are some significant concerns from our neighborhood when it comes to livability and in particular, safety. One of our questions is, after public input was given, what changes have been made to the transportation master plan? And what provisions are being made to ensure that our neighborhoods will remain safe as 90th South goes through? Are there provisions for controlling speeds, truck traffic? Are there traffic calming provisions that will be put in? Are there crosswalks that will make it safe for members of our community to cross 90th South in that area? Thank you.
Good questions. Thank you. Who has the answers?
Yeah, thank you. Great questions. Yeah, thank you, great questions. So the Ninety South extension has been on the, oh, sorry.
Say what?
Yeah, are there any other public hearing comments?
I'm sorry, we need to finish the public comments, the public hearing before we take the answers.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else by phone or by Zoom that wishes to comment?
There are no other hands raised.
Okay. Do we need to close public hearing before we get the answers? Okay, public hearing is now closed. Jeremy, back to you.
Thank you. So those were great questions. The Ninety South extension has been on both the regional long-range plan and the city's transportation master plan for a couple decades now. And so that's moving forward. We understand and have met with the neighborhood multiple times and we understand that there is some great concern about that. That's a big change for their neighborhood and we understand that and we're cognizant of that. There are several features that are going in as part of this. A new signal at New Bingham and Sixty-Fourth is being designed currently. A new signal is planned at Sixty-Fourth. That will provide crosswalks and a signalized safe crossing for pedestrians to cross between the two neighborhoods as well as go up to the elementary school just north of there. There are, you know, bi-lanes planned, the new intersection just to the east, which will be New Bingham and Ninety. That'll be another signalized crossing, which will provide crosswalks and safe pedestrian crossing there as well. What else? What am I missing? Oh, trucks, yeah, thank you. Yeah, trucks are concerned that there is the industrial area just to the south of there that is heavily utilized by trucks. New Bingham is primarily the roadway they'll be using, not Ninety where it's more residential. Which is why it's important to keep that New Bingham connection there. We cannot prohibit trucks on these arterials. That's not legally allowed. We can designate truck routes and encourage trucks to use certain routes, but we can't prohibit them or pull them over or do anything like that to stop. What else, Mr.? I think you guys had posted some, or no, you looked into posting Jake Brake signs out there, right? And that wasn't, that didn't meet the criteria. Yeah, good point, thanks Nate. So we did a pretty in-depth analysis on whether we could de-emphasize New Bingham. And with the amount of growth and densities and things that are occurring and are planned out there, we really need both roads. And we need the capacity of both roads to be that five lane. So they're both important roadways. Unfortunately, we just don't have the capacity to take away one or de-emphasize one. They both need to be there and serve the areas that they go to. Thank you.
Just, I think she had one more question. What changes were implemented after the public survey or after the public comment was taken?
Yeah, great question. We looked a lot at Duck Ridge Road and things that are happening there and there's still additional studies that are happening there. We got feedback about the intersection at New Bingham and Sixty-Fourth and how challenging that one was. And so we did a signal warrant study and found that that warranted and UDOT is now building a signal there. What else? Oh yeah, thank you, thank you, that's a big one. So with these concerns, we, there were, the public wanted us to look at some other alternatives, right? A no-build scenario or whether, you know, if we didn't connect that and had all the traffic on Ninety from the west come down to New Bingham and around. And so there's an additional study done to look at that. And it was pretty in-depth, looking at different alternatives there. And that found that, you know, again, there's enough demand there that we need both roads. We can't just close one or not connect Ninety through. You just won't have enough demand there. The queuing and the delay shown on that went back from, you know, thousands of feet and it had significant delay. And so it's just not feasible in order to have that transportation network in that area function without both those roads. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion by the commission? This notch will entertain a motion. Commissioner Hatch, I think, was first.
It's so close. I will go ahead and make a motion unless, okay. Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation to the City Council concerning the proposed updates to the West Jordan City Transportation Master Plan.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The voting is unanimous in favor of the recommendation or the application. Next item is the Jordan Valley Station, amended development agreement for the purpose of extending the expiration date. This one is being continued, so somebody, Commissioner Thomas?
I'll make the motion. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission postpone the request to amend the Jordan Valley Station Development Agreement to July 16th, the next meeting.
I'll second.
I recommend.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, any opposed, by the same sign? Last item on the agenda is a text amendment, text amendment, I O Z development standards. Mr. Gardner?
So thank you. This is going to be interesting. We'll have to move this to read it, okay. So as I said, discussed in the pre-meeting, the I O Z has development standards that were adopted when the I O Z interchange overlay zone was adopted by the city a few years back. Some of them are inconsistent with uses that want to come in these areas. For instance, one of the inconsistencies is you could have a six-story office building, but a two-story commercial building. And a hotel is considered a commercial building. And so the changes that are being proposed for the development standard, as you can see here in red, the number A deals with architectural features. And so it should be, and what it said before, well, it still says you should differentiate the upper floors from the first floor. So it looks, you know, people are naturally drawn to the first floor and then this builds upon, the architecture builds upon the higher stories. The original design standard had, you know, a lot of glass. 65% of the first floor needed to be glass. And many commercial people find that very, very difficult to do in this day and age. It happens if you're in a very urban area and you're building where it's highly pedestrian oriented. It works very well. And I'm not very good at pretending that suburban areas are urban in nature. I think that they both have their functional relationship to society. Most people live in suburbs in Utah. Not many people, it's not Manhattan. And trying to pretend that a copper rim is a Manhattan is just pretending. And so, you know, many of the commercial people said that's, you know, we can put architecture features in to make the building look nice without being so much glass. You know, and in particular, a hotel, they struggle with that because on first floor you have rooms. And I guess if it was a hotel that had a lot of conference space, you could do that. But it really makes it difficult to design the functional interior of a building if there is so much glass. Now, I'm not saying it doesn't have a place because it does. If you're in an area where the whole street is restaurants, it works very well. But it doesn't work just to carte blanche, require every building to look like that, I think is not very pragmatic and doesn't work very well. So I think if you give the people that are designing these more leeway to design it so it looks nice, the Planning Commission can still weigh in on that when it comes before you. Siding, and so before it said all parking had to be located in the back. There's not many commercial developers that go for that. They like some parking in the front. A lot of them like all parking. I'm not saying that all parking has to be in front, but I think it's good to allow maximum flexibility that parking can be on all sides of buildings. Front and rear yard setbacks. My proposal is to get away from the zero lot line and on the front and rear and require a minimum of 15 feet. And that is purely for a utility function. We have found that when we do zero lot line in commercial areas, there's all kinds of easements, utilities that we find that are troublesome to install. Then the number D, I've increased the size to, if the building's over 50 feet in height and it's adjacent to a residential development, it has to be setback starting in the 40-foot line. 30 feet is not very tall for a commercial building. In fact, our maximum height in a residential area now is 35 feet. So it just doesn't make a lot of sense to make it shorter than what's next door. And then E, I've removed, I've put in at least one door window or significant architectural feature approved by the Planning Commission. Functional door to me is problematic because some people interpret that to say it's a door that's open all the time. I think some doors can be doors, but they're not, maybe they're safety doors or something like that. They're not necessarily determined as a functional door for everyday use. Number F is shall incorporate architectural features on the corner side approved by the Planning Commission. And then K is the big one. Instead of one story, the maximum of three stories. I said two stories in the pre-meeting, excuse me for that. I've changed that to a maximum of 60 feet or five stories. Or if it's adjacent to Mountain View Corridor, 85 feet or seven stories. I think the closer you get to that corridor, the higher buildings are not intrusive at all. And then Naughty Dog shall not be visible from an interior street or, and it used to say Mountain View Corridor, Bangor Highway. And that's purely if the Planning Commission agrees on that one. And then the site design, it was basically, as Commissioner Allen brought up, four-story cited architecture still required along Mountain View Corridor, but I simply remove Bangor Highway because it's no longer relevant. Do you have any questions for me?
I'm a little bit, a little bit lost on the of a D and a K. We talk about 40 feet, 50 feet and 60 feet. Can you just help me understand those a little bit better?
So D is, if a building is over 50 feet high and it's located next to a lower-density residential development, that wouldn't mean if it's located next to an apartment building, a four-story apartment building. But say it's, for some reason, it gets located next to a single-family home, then the setback would go from 15 feet and you would add one foot for everything over 40 feet or starting at 40 feet. So say your 15-foot setback would then be increased to 25 feet. So it disposes the building, that portion of the building, it makes it kind of stair-stepped, so it's not looming over it. It can be a 15 feet and then it's setback. It's kind of a stair-step is what they call it. So it's not so looming over the building or the adjacent properties.
So that's addressing properties that are adjacent to residential development?
Yeah.
Whereas K is adjacent to Mountain View Corridor?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, of course, K is 60 feet anywhere in the I O Z or if it's adjacent to Mountain View. There's several lots that aren't adjacent to Mountain View, but some are. The building can be taller, the closer it gets to Mountain View Corridor. And in the copper rim development, which is the only zone that's, which is the only area that's zoned I O Z, the 85-foot building would not be close to any residential because there'd be a water tank in between the residential and the building. So the commercial area, I should say. I don't know if I left it more confusing or not, I should have had a picture, but I don't. I don't draw very good pictures with my words, so.
You'd have a lot of pictures trying to describe all of this. Are there other questions or comments for Mr. Gardner? Okay, this item was noticed also for public hearing. So public hearing is now open. Is there anybody by phone or by Zoom that wishes to comment?
There are no hands raised.
Seeing nobody, public hearing is now closed. We're ready to entertain a motion or additional comments. Commissioner Allen?
Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanation received today, I move that the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation to the City Council for this application.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
We'll go ahead and second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I bet I know who's going to make the motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion that we adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.